I have the pleasure of introducing our four panel speakers for you today. I'm really looking forward to this panel. We, I don't know much about school boards personally, so I think I was maybe a little selfishly interested in getting a little bit more information. What does that mean, you know, for our community? What sorts of decisions do they hold power over? What can we do to better engage with them? So today I've brought four folks who are running for TUSD, Vail and Sunnyside School Boards, two TUSD folks, and we're going to hopefully all learn some stuff and want to be more engaged in our communities. Thanks, Leanne. These are my fancy pride suspenders. So in no particular order, first we have Dr. Ravi Gravish Shah. Ravi is a family physician. He's a candidate for the TUSD School Board and he's Wave Ravi. And he is medical directors of both the Alvernon Family Medicine Clinic, which is a banner health clinic, and the Mobile Health Program. I'm going to do sort of a, everybody's going to get the chance to talk a little bit about themselves briefly. So these are sort of truncated facts and things. Next up, we have Matthew Taylor. Matthew is a student at Pima Community College. He's got an extraordinary life story that really speaks to resiliency. And I, from what I can tell, that seems to really inform his candidacy for Sunnyside School Board. Then we have Joshua Ashton. He won our first gift card. I'm not jealous at all, totally am. And he is a candidate for the Vail School Board. I actually grew up in Vail, so that's awesome. And he focuses on LGBTQ community and educator rights amongst, of course, many other issues. So last up, we have Adam Reagan. Adam is our second TUSD candidate on the panel today. And he's a high school English teacher who was instrumental in the opening of the Thornhill Lopez Center on Fourth. He's very active in the LGBTQ community. I just learned that he helped create Tucson's first rainbow crosswalk, so gotta love that. To read everybody's full bios, definitely check out our social media channels. Jax has done a wonderful job making everything look beautiful and colorful. But I'm going to jump right into the panel here with our first question, which is, I want to know from each of the panelists, what, you know, what led you to, what in your personal life story led you to want to run for school board? And what does it mean to you to have LGBTQ representation on your school boards? So Melanie, you're going to work the magic of everybody talking one by one. We'll go in the order that I introduced everybody. Dr. Ravi first, then Matthew, Joshua and Adam.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you, Avira, and thank you, everyone, for hosting this event and talking about our school districts, which is sometimes a forgotten realm of policy and where we can really make an influence for the youth in the Tucson area. So the first question is about our journey and what brought me to run for a school board. My journey came from three different experiences in my life. You know, as a family physician, I've been an advocate for my patients and communities on issues from women's health to clean air and communities of color, to LGBTQ health issues. And I've been hearing from my patients and their parents over the years about their struggles with schools, about class sizes too large and disengaging curriculum teaching to the test, behavioral issues that manifest during the school days without the resources to meet them. And I heard those stories also manifested in my husband's experience. My husband, Tim, spent most of his career as an elementary school teacher and spent four years as a principal in TUSD, working at Gruh Haba Elementary School in the southwest part of Tucson. From him, I learned about the struggles, not just the great things that he was able to do, but a lot of the struggles and challenges in our district, and also about the disparities racially and geographically inherent within our own district in terms of resources and outcomes. But we've had the opposite experience as parents in a district. You know, I have three kids and our oldest is entering third grade at Line Weaver Elementary School in TUSD, and this will be our fourth year as TUSD parents. And we've had a great experience as parents in the district. Love her schools, love her teachers, love the community that the schools have. And I've been involved as a PTA member and a treasurer of my daughter's PTA, involved with the TUSD Audit Committee, helping with the financial sustainability of our school district, and more recently with Adam Reagan on the Family Life Curriculum Committee to really make that influence and really affect change for our students. And so the reasons why I'm running for school board is really putting together those experiences and trying to make sure that all Tucson families have the same opportunities to have a welcoming, nurturing, positive and academically sound experience for everyone.
Perfect. Thanks, Dr. Ravi.
So my name is Matthew Taylor. I'm 20 years old. I'm a Pima Community College student. You know, I've always really taken an interest in public service. I guess what really kind of inspired me to run for the Sunnyside School Board was definitely my time spent in foster care system. You know, I really realized how underfunded, under-resourced our schools were. And see, I was placed in the foster care system on the very first day of my junior year in high school. And that completely like changed the course of my life forever. You know, I was what DCS called a runner because I was, you know, I always ran away. You know, and when I did, you know, I knew that I couldn't go back to my high school. I couldn't go back to Sunnyside. I knew that that would have been the first place that I was looked for. So, you know, after returning, after leaving, after coming back, after re-enrolling, after, you know, that whole number, you know, I finally dropped out and just got my GED a year later. I knew that it was the right thing to do for myself. But what really struck me the most is that I spent over a year in hiding and not once did I get a call from the school district asking me to return or even just checking on me. You know, looking back now, I realize that Sunnyside really needs to do a lot more in terms of student retention and a lot more. You know, but I wasn't going to wait for anybody else to make that first move. I knew that it needed to be me. And as a 20-year-old, you know, as a former foster care kid, you know, as someone who never really grew up in very stable homes, as an openly LGBT person, you know, I've got a lot of fires inside of me. And having that kind of representation is so critical when it comes to decision-making on behalf of our kids, on behalf of our students. You know, not only having LGBT representation, not necessarily even being as young as I am. Above all else, we really need to elect people that have fires inside of them, folks who are willing to redirect those flames and turn them into something beautiful. And that's where I come in.
Perfect. You guys are killing it on the timing. I love this. This is perfect. Joshua, let's move to you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Joshua Ashton. I'm 19 years old. I'm a student at Pima Community College as well. And, you know, my story on how I came to run for the Vail School Board comes from a place of mental health. For a large portion of my life, I grew up in a small rural and very conservative town in northern Maine. And almost everyone I knew was very homophobic and, including to a certain extent, my own family. And it caused a lot of mental health issues for me. And when I eventually moved here a few years ago, within six weeks, there were six weeks left of the semester, there were three suicides and a homicide in the Vail School District, which is higher than normal, but that shouldn't even be happening. And the districts did nothing until almost every single parent in the school district was up in arms because they weren't calling attention to this at all. And so back in 2018, I started to get more involved in politics. And the districts, when I approached the district about student mental health, they completely blew me off. And they blew off another 20 students, which I organized to show up at a board meeting. So ultimately, what it sort of comes down to is a lack of representation of, from a, from a board that's composed of five middle-aged and older whites and straight people, which I'm the opposite of all those, and a lack of transparency around how they make decisions.
Thanks so much. Adam?
Good morning, everybody. Adam Reagan, teacher, running for TUSD School Board. I'd like to thank the chamber for having me here and it's nice to see so many friends on the grid view, even though we can't be together this morning. I think the journey that led me to run for school board, both in 2018 and now, is the same journey that got me into education. If we all stop and think we had that teacher that really helped us understand the world, helped us understand ourselves, and I think all along I was always fated to be a teacher. And, you know, it's no wonder that I continue to come back to education. Because as the folks were talking before me, I know all three of the gentlemen that preceded me. And the reason why I'm in education and the reason why I'm running for the school board is we see two youth right now who are stepping up to run for their school board. And that's the exact reason why I'm in education, is my students. And to see two former students who could be doing anything else with their life other than running for public office and trying to serve in an unpaid position where oftentimes you make more enemies than friends because you have to make decisions, really speaks to what our youth can do and what this up-and-coming generation is about. So that's what I'm hoping to provide in my classroom. What propels me to run for the TUSD Board is kind of the same thing I've told a lot of folks about. But the reality is that without a teacher's voice on the school board, we often get left to the side. And the person that gets left out of that equation the most would be our students. So for me, it was always watching the school board and hearing them talk about anything but our students and thinking that, again, as we call it in the education field, a redirect, trying to get the board to come back to the thing that we're supposed to be there for. So, oh, I see 30 seconds, so I yield back my time so we can get on.
Thanks so much. I want to clarify, and Dr. Ravi and Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I understand that there are three seats on TUSD available. Is that correct? Okay. So, yeah, we're going to move to our second question here. I'm going to pull it up so that I don't bungle it. Thank you all for sharing a little bit about what brought you here. I love hearing all of the different ways that, you know, the paths that lives have taken that lead you to wanting to take care of our community. So the second question we have for y'all today is, do you have any tips for how folks can engage with their school boards to advocate for student civil rights, including not just LGBTQ issues, but also, you know, immigration status, Black Lives Matter, that sort of thing? So, Dr. Ravi, let's go with you first and I'll get the timer ready.
Great, yeah, definitely being engaged is so important. You know, we've all heard the adage that if you're not at the table, then you're on the menu. And I'm not a huge fan of that adage because I think that misses a point. And I don't want to be at the table. I want to be writing the grocery list and cooking the food and spicing the food and making sure that it's what we need it to be. And for an example, you know, so many people, you know, came out to advocate on the Family Life Curriculum. And I think, you know, a lot of us can talk about that experience because it was such a pivotal experience in Tucson, fighting for LGBTQ rights and what hate came out because of it. And, you know, thanks to so many people on this Zoom this morning, you know, were out there, you know, advocating, going to the community forums and protesting and making sure our voice was heard. And that was so important. But it's even more important to be on these committees and to get involved and to run for office, support individuals who are running for office, who can get our voice, not just at the table, at these forums, but behind the scenes, writing the curriculum. You know, if Adam and I weren't on the Family Life Curriculum, you know, we wouldn't have as an inclusive of a curriculum. When I read that curriculum, it was so stigmatizing to gay individuals. It was stigmatizing for women. There were things in there that was just medically inaccurate and really stigmatizing in that curriculum that we got rid of. And when we included the information on defining, you know, what's the differences between sex and gender and sexuality, and, you know, TUSD students, 45,000 students in TUSD will now have a curriculum that is medically accurate and comprehensive. And so, you know, being not just at the table advocating, but being behind the scenes, working on these committees, volunteering for these committees. Now, look at the Audit Committee, which I'm part of. You know, there are rarely any parents on the Audit Committee or individuals that actually live in our district. There's people that live outside our district on the Audit Committee. And so if you live in TUSD or in Vail or in Sunnyside or others, whatever school district you live in, make sure you get involved on these committees to have our voice represented at all levels so that we could be writing the menus and not just being at the table.
Thanks so much. Matthew, we're going to switch over to you.
Okay. So I have one tip. You know, speak up, speak out about these things, whatever they may be, that you're passionate about. You know, I always tell people, you are your best advocate. But make sure that you have a plan in place. You know, early last year before I had begun running for the Sunnyside School Board, I actually went to a board meeting for the very first time in my life. And there I did the call to the audience. I went up to the podium and I addressed the board. You know, and the superintendent, and let me tell you, like, I let them have it. I just totally ripped them a new one. Because, you know, I felt that my experiences with the district were something that needed to be shared. I mean, they didn't even know that I had existed before that evening. And, you know, I had to compile all of my thoughts, all of my experiences and all of that anger inside of me into three minutes because that's what we were, that's what we were given. You know, but I got my point across far enough to the point where, you know, after I spoke, the superintendent got up out of his chair, ran after me as I was walking out. And, you know, he says to me, you know, you've got a lot of great ideas. Now let's do something about it. And I really commend our superintendent for that. You know, he's a very fearless, brave, awesome dude who really advocates for our students. And, I mean, I commend him for that because, you know, he ran after a kid who had just, you know, totally let him have it and like put all of those flames out on the table in front of them. And he wanted to do something about the issues that, the issues that I brought up. You know, so when it comes to engaging with our school boards, you know, there is no right or wrong way. But speaking out, speaking up, those are definitely the first steps for any issue. You know, you'd be very surprised at how well you can captivate the attention of those that you're addressing. You know, there's a lot of word on the street as far as what a school board member can and cannot do. You know, what tasks or community issues need to be passed on to the appropriate departments, the appropriate employees, that you shouldn't break the ranks. And that's just not true. You know, the community elects us for a reason. You know, as a school board member, I will be the one that chases after, you know, a community member and says, I want to help. I will bend over backwards for any community member who, you know, seeks help with an issue that they're really passionate about because that's why we're elected.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. Joshua, we're going to move to you. Do you go by Joshua? Josh?
Honestly, I kind of go by both. I default to Joshua, but it's Josh.
Okay. Wonderful.
So I think the biggest tip I have is just remain persistent. And if persistence is getting nowhere, then to challenge the school board members in an election the next time they're up for reelection. Since 2018, in the Vail School District, I've been advocating and organizing for student mental health and for school safety, for LGBTQ plus rights in our schools. And the board and the districts at large has largely been pretty apathetic to hearing a student out, to hearing a former student out, or to even change on a lot of these issues. And so one day, I just kind of said, you know what? Like, they're not really going to change. They're not going to start trying to make the districts one of the most environmentally friendly districts in Arizona. They're not going to revamp our curriculum to move away from not just absence-only sex ed, but in addition to also have it be LGBTQ plus inclusive and for it to be medically accurate and so on and so forth. They're not going to be moving to make all of these changes in so many areas. So why am I bashing my head in trying to get through to these people who just frankly aren't listening after a year and a half, two years? So, yeah, you know, if, you know, it doesn't really matter specifically what issue you have in a school district. But, you know, just be persistent and continue to advocate. Don't let up. And if that gets you nowhere, if there isn't any change, then challenge them the next time they're up for an election.
Heck, yeah. I love it. Just vote them out. That's perfect. Adam, we'll move to you.
So I think this is a really good question. And I've been, if you've noticed, nodding my head as the panelist spoke before me because everything they say, I think I would echo and say, I have two bits of advice. Number one, I think we're already doing that. Get to know your school board. Invite them to chamber meetings. Invite them to other meetings for other groups that you're involved in. Make sure you know their names and make sure you contact them. They are elected to serve the community and that's what we need to make them do. I think Joshua's absolutely correct in saying that when you recognize a board is not going to serve you and the community, then it's time to step up, start running for office. But that first step is having the conversation. And my advice would be the same to my students, right? Be audacious and be tenacious. Don't be afraid to ask for what it is that you want. We saw that with Family Life Curriculum. Dr. Ravi and I were writing that curriculum, making sure it was medically accurate, inclusive and reflective of the entire community. And we would get community input. And for the most part, it was really good. Then we saw there was a group of folks that was very concerted in their effort to, I guess, besmirch, I'm trying to find the nice words for eight o'clock in the morning, to say what they were doing, was shenanigans. They were there to cause problems. They were out of district. They had no interest other than their own personal agenda. But we saw the way they were able to coalesce together. But then we went to Troy and we had this beautiful forum where we had hundreds of people there supporting our LGBTQ students and then an outside group where folks were able to really support our students. And that sort of tenacity to show up and advocate for what's right, the audacity to speak out, is what moves things along the line so that we actually ended up with a really good curriculum that will make sure that our students have what they need to be aware of their bodies, the world that they operate in, and make healthy, informed decisions, including consent. And that was a huge one that we got to hear from the community. And just say, 10 years ago, when I was getting started in school board politics to now, being able to have the conversation about consent has only happened because folks would pick up the phone, they would send an email, they would show up at board meetings and speak for three minutes and say, we demand this be included. So what I would push back out for everybody is, don't just have us around as friends ahead of time, by the way, invite us and tell us when we're doing wrong. Let me know when I can do better for you. I have, I think my cell phone number is out there for everybody, but it's 520-500-7811. It's that type of ability to connect back with me and my fellow board members when I do get elected so that we can know what it is you need and want from us.
That's really great advice. We do have one question from the audience. I'm going to give each of you one minute to answer it. How do you see yourself as a school board member addressing the systemic racism in education that our community seems ready to start exploring? Dr. Ravi, let's go ahead and start with you.
And thanks for that question. You know, it's so prevalent right now. And I think the first step is recognizing the problem and getting the data that supports the problem. You know, TUSD is a large district and there are so many disparities within our own district. You know, I've been to schools from the southwest tip to the east side to central Tucson over the last year. And the resources that schools have, the classes, you know, having the ability to have arts and music education and other things available, it changes based on geography and zip code. And I speak to my own daughter's principal and, you know, in central Tucson here and how so much of their tax credit money comes from the surrounding neighborhood, not just from parents, but from just, you know, people who are retired, who still live surrounding Line Weaver, and how because of that, they're able to form music and arts education and after-school program and be in a homeless school, while other schools and more disadvantaged neighborhoods don't have that benefit. Like my husband's former school down in southwest Tucson in Midway Park. And just recognizing the disparities is a first step. Next, also making sure our data is accurate. You know, when we talk about discipline data and, you know, changes in that, you know, if we're tying the hands of our principals to actually do what's best in their schools and saying, you know, sure, the student happens to skip, but you can't, you know, file a disciplinary report because of statistics and we're trying to cook the books or doing something different that's inappropriate. We need to really take a grain of salt in what information is coming out on those types of things as well so we can really understand the problem best. And once we understand the problem, then we can start. My time is up. Sorry, I addressed it. I didn't get to address it, but hopefully my colleagues can start talking about that piece of it.
I know. I know it's not fair to ask such a huge question with only one minute per. So we're definitely going to make sure that everybody knows how to get in touch with each of you after this breakfast is over so that the conversations can continue because the point of this is just to start the conversations. Matthew, I'm going to go ahead and kick it over to you.
Yeah, you know, it's really critical that, you know, I really, I don't know how to highlight the importance of like education and curriculum, you know, especially in promoting, you know, racial justice, like in our schools, in a timeframe of one minute. You know, it's really important that we expand on the curriculums that are already put in place because, you know, nobody's born a racist. Nobody is born a xenophobe. Nobody's born a homophobe. All of those are learned traits, sometimes, you know, inherently passed down from our parents. And it's really kind of up to our schools to intervene and interfere in that narrow-mindedness and really expand the minds of our young people through our curriculums and, you know, really just expanding on those, you know, having those deep conversations in the classroom. That's, you know, super, super, super critical. And I think I'm just going to leave it there because I think my time's up.
It sure is. Y'all are doing great. Thank you so much for making my job easy as a moderator. Joshua, we're going to move to you.
So I think it really comes down to two things. And I apologize in advance if I'm talking really fast. A lot to say. So first of all, I think Matthew's right. It comes down to curriculum, comes down to history specifically, right? Because in history classes, there is no indigenous or just generally minority representation in significant people in history with a couple of notable exceptions, which the people that weren't able to avoid, such as, you know, Martin Luther King Jr. You know, so making sure that we have a curriculum that is fair to people who have contributed, no matter what their race or ethnicity is, I think is very important. In addition to that, in Vail, there's no data at all about our discipline and how our school resource officers might be impacting our students and if they're unfairly targeting a certain demographic. But that's another thing which, A, we need to get the data on and then B, we need to start moving away from school resource officers because to begin with, there's no evidence nationally that they actually contribute to school safety and to students' personal safety.
Thanks so much. Adam?
Yes, so what I'd like to start by saying is first, Black Lives Matter and Black Trans Lives Matter. And we need to say that more and more in our politics. We need to make sure that we're having that conversation. That's where we're at now, I think, as an education community and recognizing, we heard the comments about curriculum. So as a teacher, I work to put CRC, Culture Relevant Curricula, into my classroom and practices to make sure that I am inclusive. I ask, who are the authors of the text that I'm assigning? How do I make sure that I work to bring in those student voices? To make sure that everybody in the classroom has a chance for peer-to-peer learning, but also learning from that text down to them. I think within TUSD, it's a continued push, not only for our culture-relevant curricula, but making sure we understand the value of Mexican-American studies, African-American studies, indigenous American studies, and recognizing the roles of a diverse community that has come together to create literature and scholarship, as well as making sure that we recognize our students. I don't have time in one minute to talk about TUSD's history with desegregation, the court order, unitary status, as well as the discipline. unitary status, as well as the discipline issues. But see me after the meeting. I'm more than happy to talk about this for hours.
I have to say, excuse me, my, my sister has a new baby and it just seems so terrifying to be raising a kid. I mean, I, obviously it's not my kid, so I get to just feel this fear and then let her raise the child. But it really does give me a lot of hope, knowing that there are folks out there like you guys advocating and really doing the work to make the change that goes for all of the activists that we have represented here in our meeting this morning.